If you'll join me for our pledge allegiance to the flag, followed by the invocation. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you bow with me, please? Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you as humbly as we know how to ask your guidance on every decision that we make, particularly those that affect others. We ask that you'll grant us wisdom in everything that we think, say, or do, in Jesus's name. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the robe, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Reniger.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Fink.
Call the council meeting officially open at 6:22 PM Tuesday, October the 2nd, 2012. The character trait for the month is obedience, quickly and cheerfully carrying out the direction of those who are responsible for me. Fellow councilors, you have received the minutes from the city council meeting of September the 18th, 2012. This time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Counselor Miller, second by Counselor Bowles. Any amendments, questions, comments about the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign saying none, the minutes are approved. We've been instructed by our legal counsel that we must go into a executive session at the end of the agenda, so in order to conserve some time, we're going to open up the floor for comments from any person present on any item of business. It does not have to be on the agenda, but it can be on the agenda. If you have any item of business you'd like to bring before the council, please raise your hand. Yes, please come forward, state your name and address and your business. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Richard Minnich. It's M-I-N-N-I-G-H. Notice it's misspelled in some reports. I live at 105 Asbury Drive in Burton Manor. I'm also the president of the homeowners association there, representing 54 homes in District One. I was going to speak at the meeting we just had, but I thought this would be a better forum for this. Just quickly go through things, I wanted to hear what you guys were talking about in regard to the taxes and just give you some impressions that I have and just, you guys did a great job. I don't, I appreciate what you do. It's hard to sit up there and be at the firing squad sometimes and to have gone through everything you've gone through and the changes, it's pretty amazing. When the mayor stood up here originally and asked the citizens of Prattville to help in erasing the debt as a result of the slowing economy and some of the poor decisions made by the previous administration and several members of the sitting council, we were here strong to back you. We felt the pain and we wanted the city to get back on its feet. For me, I'm responsible for profit and loss for several companies. You know, I go through budgeting, I go through planning, and it's a challenge. When this first happened, we said, it's just one little penny. What harm is that going to do? No one will miss a penny. But, and the general thought among the council was that people wouldn't miss it, but let's see really what that one penny means. And I'm not arguing against reducing it necessarily at this point, but just that it does have a finite date on it and that date is manageable. I myself inject $28,000 into this economy for Prattville. That's after I've paid my mortgage to other people and all that. The amount of money that goes to Prattville itself is $28,000. So the city is getting the $280 extra from me a year right now. If you look at my neighborhood and you consider maybe that as average, that's $15,120 just for the one penny, just from my neighborhood. That could purchase 1,260 meals at a local Mexican restaurant. It could purchase 2,284 number-one meals at Chick-fil-A, which we all love. It could easily employ a part-time person, just our neighborhood, for the one penny. And understand that amount is spread out, but just for analogy's sakes. If that person is employed, they spend their income and they also grow the local businesses. When local businesses grow, they hire more, which ingests more. It's a self-funding machine once it gets started. If we look at a larger scale, Prattville has taken in $1,819,60.91 with the one penny since January 1st. That amount of money would employ 35 employees, making $35,000, taking into account a 1.5 ratio, which is normally what you have. So again, 35 employees, you spread that out, they'd be buying those kind of things. I do understand that that amount's spread out. If we looked over the life of the tax, that's 125 people. You know, now it starts to sound even more significant. So I'm just, we as citizens, we're overly burdened and it's not just by the City of Prattville, even close. The 2% FICA tax is supposed to go away in January. That's 2% of the income that people are bringing home right now is going to go away. The Federal Health Care Act is also causing additional uncertainty. You know, unfortunately, politicians never meet a tax they don't like. And you never see taxes and/or fees reduced. It took AT&amp;T 75 years to get rid of a tax that was there for Confederate veterans' spouses. They didn't even know they had it. And that's what I don't want to have happen here is, we have this tax going on to 2031 and we forget why it's there, or we forget to take it away when it could have been taken away and the debt's already paid off. You're talking councils that are many, many years down the road. Our children, our children's children, in fact. So, I know you don't want to reduce services delivered by the city, but there may be instances where that exactly has to happen. You have to make the hard decisions. For example, you look at vehicles, you know, look at who all has vehicles, maybe that's not as necessary, maybe they can rotate, those kind of things. As New York Governor Christie said on Sunday's Meet the Press, "You have to convince people that you have done everything you can on the spending side before you ask for more money." And I'm not convinced we've done that. I think we've done a great job. I think the mayor's done a great job. He put a budget before us that addresses using the half-cent tax, for which was already agreed upon. And it's my feeling that you could probably work within that budget. Now, obviously, that budget gets changed, as you did last year. You increased the amount of that budget as time went on. I'm not even sure we know the amount of difference between the original budget and how much was actually approved at the end. I know there's concerns about Elmore County keeping the tax at a higher rate and collecting additional taxes, but that's largely unfounded because they have to get approval from the state legislature to even do that, and that's not going to happen, especially in this season. Just in closing, I'd ask you to proceed either with the reduction of the tax or at least put a date on the one-cent tax so that we know when that's going to finish. A determination can be made at a later date, whether it needs to be renewed or increased. That decision should be up to the next council, not the current one. To make a decision like that today, to me, is a little disingenuous to the citizens of Prattville. For those of you who will not be returning to the council, I would hope you wouldn't let one of your last acts be remembered as, "I continue this tax on the citizens of Prattville." Let the next council make that decision whether it needs to be there. We still have time to do that, and within the mayor's budget. As we know, we cannot tax people into prosperity. If you put money in people's pockets, they spend it. When they spend it, businesses grow. The more people that can be hired provides a better tax base to the city. So, as representing, having 54 households in our area, 115 District One voters, you know, I hope you guys would consider to at least have a finite end time to the tax if you proceed with that. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Comments?
Just one question. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Appreciate it.
You mentioned that Elmore County needed to go before the legislature to get a tax passed.
My understanding is there is a tax levelling agreement with Elmore County for the portion of Prattville that resides in Elmore County.
Okay.
There was some banter that I had seen about, that there was some concern that if Prattville reduced their tax, that Elmore County side would keep theirs on that part of Prattville. But to my knowledge, that can't be done anyway without going to the legislature and having that approved, which I don't think would ever be approved.
And you may be right on that. The only other part about that that concerns me is that another entity, whether it's Elmore County, for instance, Selma, if you saw the news, 5 PM, News 9, 26 and 12, Selma County Commission passed a half-cent sales tax for education. So there are things that can be done by the commission that's not specifically for the entire county, but for education.
Correct.
So, there's some things that can be done. That would take Prattville completely out of the loop.
Correct, but you've always had that issue.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to address the council on any item of business? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hadn't seen you with us in a while.
Well, I'm sure you've missed that a lot.
I have, I have.
You know, I've been through this mess with, everybody on this was 1% tax for, what have we gone, two years, something like that we've been discussing?
For the record, we need your name and address.
Oh, yeah. Carl Hawthorne, 704 Emerald Drive, Prattville.
Mr. Hawthorne.
Thank you. And I appreciate the gentleman that was just here, his comments, but I think Councilman Striplin hit it on the head. We can't do anything about what's already been done as far as debt. We can only control what's going forward. You can say, well, let's do it in two years, but the debt's still going to be there. You can say, we'll do it in 10 years, the debt's still going to be there. And then the gentleman said, well, what if they forget? Well, people aren't going to forget. I mean, I just know how people are. They're not going to forget that we have a 1% on there. When this tax was discussed, there were all kinds of ramifications. And quite frankly, the council responded quite politically, and I think that was a disservice to the citizens of Prattville. I think now we're going to have a better council to address this issue, and whether you approve it or whether the next council approves it, to me, makes no difference. It has to be approved. If you look at what we've gotten from the 1%, we have the entire nation of cities going bankrupt after bankruptcy after bankruptcy. Why are they going bankrupt? Because they don't have enough income. Well, they also don't have, in many cases, the $60 million of debt. So you can't have everything. You can't have less taxes and more expenses and expect to survive. You're, it's going, there's going to be a conflict. My suggestion is, I don't care if you do the thing for five years, 10 years, or 2,000, or 19 years. It isn't going to change in two years. It isn't going to change in three years. And people that think the economies are going to get better, they should, they'll wait and they'll say, these economies are not getting better. The national economy is not getting better. So we need to take care of that debt so that we can have the city services that we want. We have to have our police and fire. And just to remind people, we cut millions of dollars thanks to the mayor and his efforts and also the council went along finally. And you cut a lot of, I mean, I don't know what else you can cut. I know the fire department's cut huge sums. I know the police department's cut, other departments have cut. So when somebody comes up and says, well, I'd like to see where you can cut more, do you realize what a half a cent, we're talking about it, the half percent some people will buy, the other half percent they want? We have gasoline prices going up 15 cents in one day, one day, 40 cents in one month, and yet we pay it. What is 1% to keep the city services and our city functioning properly? So that when I have my heart attack, or I need a, my house is on fire, or somebody is robbing me, I have enough support from the city to provide the proper services necessary to take care of us. Citizens, I have to tell you, we are going to need more police and we're going to need more fire as things go, because I do not see this nation improving. I see things getting worse, and I just thank God we're in Alabama and Prattville, that we're not in a large city, because that's where it's going to go bad first. We need this money, and two years isn't going to do it, three years. Fact of the matter is, why don't you just go ahead and extend it to the time that Councilman Striplin wants? And then if things go wonderful and a miracle comes out of the sky and strikes Prattville, let's vote it out then. That would be wonderful. But to talk about this thing every year or every other year is just, I mean, it's an effort of futility. It's not going to go away. And so my suggestion is, I appreciate your efforts. I think we're going down the right direction. We have to look long-term, and whether we like it or not, a one penny is not going to hurt our, if one penny makes a difference to citizens here, well, they have a lot more problems than what the one penny represents, because one penny does not do it. And I'm proud to pay the one cent, and I'm sure that most people are, to get the services that we need. You're doing a fine job. I appreciate it, Mayor. Congratulations on your election. Congratulations to the new council members. And I just want to let you know that people are excited about our new government, but we can't handcuff them by cutting that tax. We have to keep the 1% going, and let's quit dilly-dallying around about it and get some guts and go up there and pass that thing so we don't have to look at this thing every two years. It's getting, it's getting ugly, because all we do talk about, one year, two years. Forget that. It's with us forever. I'm sorry to say, not all is involved with this tax are a result of our efforts, but many efforts created this tax, and we're going to have to pay for it, and so let's just take it and, let's see, it's like castroil, you got to take it and see what it does for you, but we got to take care of this tax. And I thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hawthorne? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business? Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes. I'm going to try to keep this brief, any way possible. Start off with October the 3rd, we have Walt the Scoo Day, which is going to be in progress. I'll be walking with, along with Principal Abram and Superintendent Spence-AG, and I hope that anybody else here that's able to get out and promote this, help me promote this national event. It's about getting our youngsters out to do a little bit of exercise. We'll start off over here at the primary school, starting at 7:45. And we may be walking west from the parking lot on West Baptist Church to join more children as they look for a longer way to walk. Then also Saturday, October the 6th, is Worldwide Day of Play. We're, City of Praval and myself are joining Nickelodeon. I'm certain anybody here has heard of Nickelodeon. It's a television show for the kids. They're stopping their promotions on it, their production on it at noon time, so the kids have an incentive to get out and play. And I'm working alongside the golf director out at RTJ, Mike Beverley's, and we'll be having kids of all ages out there, from 1 to 4, getting them to know, getting them to know a little bit about the golf, since we just recently had the RTJ event that I think was a very big success for this area. I know, saw quite a few councilors out there and quite a few citizens here during that event, and I think it was very good for our economic well-being. And we'll have more and more numbers coming across my desk on that in the near future, and I'll be glad to pass those along to everybody. But for the golfing event, if you get on our city website, you can pre-register because of, we're not certain exactly how many children, kids will be showing up. We don't know what sizes, what age, what height, so if they can get on our city website and that way they can let us know a little bit of information about them, that way we can provide some golf clubs for their use out there. October is also Breast Counsel Wellness Month, and also October 12th is Thank Pink Day here in the toggle in Praval. On October the 12th, I'm pretty much certain that we'll all be wearing our pink firefighter shirts. It's Cure for One shirt, and if you're interested in some of those, you can pick them up over here at our city hall annex from our fire department over there. The shirts are $12 each. They invite each and every one of you guys out to Heritage Park at 7:00 AM, because we'll be turning the fountain pink on that day, and hope you can join us there. I've been there for the last several years. It's usually a very pretty morning, a little, sometimes a little on the cool, a little brisk, but usually have some coffee and biscuits there, so it's a very worthwhile event there. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I just attended a signing ceremony in our First Baptist Church over here on the corner, and it's where the Domestic Violence Task Force was holding an education session for daycare workers, and I was able to acknowledge our domestic violence coordinator, Debbie Yarborough, who received a Justice for Victims Award last week from the Family Sunshine Center. Debbie's made a big difference for our community here and the lives of those who have been, needed her expertise the most, and I want to congratulate her, and the city appreciates her dedication to this program, because it's one thing I've said many, many times about the City of Praval, it's not the buildings that we have, but it's the people that are here in it, and I think we care so much for each and every one of us inside this community. Which, with those few remarks, I'm going to move right on along to our agenda, and I'm pretty much just going to skip right ahead to ordinance number three. I've sent out an email to the council and to view my opinions on it. And one thing I would like to say is that I don't see a politician sitting up here at all. Not a single one of you guys are a politician. Not a single one of you guys that I have worked with over the last several months, last several years have wanted a sales tax. I know that there's quite a few extra gray hairs up there because of the economy that we're in, the talks of furloughs, the talks of layoffs, the talks of cuts of service. But, you know, the reality is, is for us to continue providing the services that the citizens of Praval have come to know and enjoy and appreciate, I think it would, it is, by their vote of the recent council and mayoral election, is that this tax was not an issue. It is on everybody's mind. It is, to my heart, like it, I believe it is yours, I do not want this tax, but this tax is a necessity for us to continue the lifestyle that we have. Roughly 18, 20 months ago, we had some options, and that's what this world is about, is options. One of the options that we had is that we could have done like Stockton, California, and we could have filed bankruptcy. Truly, that was not an option to me. Another option that we could have done was absolutely nothing. We could have let this ship sail in the direction that it was going in, and that was not the right direction. I think the third option that we had was a business-type option. I think that it has proven where it might, might have had some flaws in it, but I believe it has got the city moving in the right direction. I've stood up here, like I say, roughly 18, 20 months ago, and asked for a five-year plan on the sales tax extension, and I still believe that we need at least a five-year plan on this. I do also believe that since we're in a very unique situation, in most quadrinions, they begin in October of, first Monday in October of one year, and end the first Monday in October four years later. Because of our troops overseas, this quadrinium has actually been extended one additional month. That is one reason why that three of you guys are still sitting up here today. Normally, we would have already had the change over in the administrations. But with all that said, since we are in such a very unique situation, I'm actually going to ask this council to, right now, the one-cent additional sales tax reduces down to a half penny in December, as we all know. I'm going to ask this council to extend that one penny all the way around to September of 2013, and that will give the next council time to get their sea legs up underneath them and be able to vote on this issue that is standing here before us. The, several months, 18, 20 months ago, when we all started talking about the sales tax and the one year was put on the table and voted on, I don't believe there was a single person sitting up here, or a single person in the audience, thought that that one year was going to get us to the position that we needed to be in. Then the second time we voted on it with the sales tax program we're under now, do not believe that anybody stood, sat up there or out here in the audience and thought that additional timeline was going to get us to the point where we needed to be. This additional six months that I've asked you for is not going to get us where we need to be. But I do believe it is the duty of the next council to vote on this, just as much it is the other four of you guys who have already elected to move on for the next quadrinium. That is my opinion as mayor and as a citizen of City of Praval, and I do truly respect each and every one of you guys up there. It is not an easy task. It is before you, but I do appreciate each and all of your hard work, and I do understand if you disagree with me on this one. Moving along after that ordinance, I want to talk a little bit about the last four years. This is our first meeting into the new quadrinium. Counselor Fink is absent tonight, so I'm going to talk directly to Council President Mike Reneger and Counselor Tom Miller. I really appreciate the last four years, last quadrinium with you guys. It has been, it has been very remarkable. We've had quite a few roller coaster rides. The, got two new members, roughly 18 months and six months or so. I know it just seemed like probably a very long time, but the, we've had quite a few new things, first things here in the City of Praval. I mean, who had ever heard of a bridge loan before? I know I had never heard of one. First time for a bridge loan, first time for a budget to be repealed, first time probably any time a mayor has ever presented three budgets before a council, and who would ever have come up with that idea. But the City of Praval has come a long ways in the last four years, and there's been a lot of firsts around Praval, and I do appreciate all of your hard work. You still have this meeting and next meeting to continue that hard work, and the sales tax extension is not going to be an easy one. But I just want to say, I appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to the city, and sometimes we just have to agree to disagree if we cannot come to a meeting of the minds. But by no means is this an easy task for you, so I do appreciate your hard work on that. If you do approve the hiring of the staff in the mayoral office, I will go ahead and have some replacements in it in the very near future, but at this point in time, I have already moved Teresa Lee from, and expanded her workload from webmaster to webmaster and executive assistant. And, but I do appreciate if you can move forward on that resolution also. But besides that, that's the end of my report.
Any questions or comments for the mayor? Counselor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, thank you for your report, a very good report. And just a couple of things, I understand where you're coming from, and I respect the new council members coming on. I got a letter from a constituent saying, how would I feel voting on an issue of disimportance knowing that I had new constituents coming on? Well, I'm already up here, and it's important, very important. I'm going to speak now because I hope when it comes up, I won't have to say anything again. One of the things about being in this position is that whether you ended in 2013, 2014, or 2031, you all have the right, as a councilperson, to introduce a new ordinance at any time. That's why it's been up here so many times now, because we all have that prerogative. So... been up here so many times now, because we all have that prerogative. So by extending it to 2031, any new council member or any old council member have the right to bring it up again. I believe the stakes are very high on this right now. I believe, as Mr. Hawthorne stated when he came up, that people don't want to keep hearing about it, whether it's the new council or the old council. It's gonna have a very detrimental effect on the city if another revenue source is not in place and this one is gone. Those stores are not gonna come in on 747s out to High Point. The revenue source is in place, and all we got to do is bring Mr. Mosley up here right now, ladies and gentlemen, our finance director, and just skip this budget and let him chair you where we would be without the tax in place, and you would not have to ask any more questions about it. I would not ask him to do that, but maybe someone else may want to. But if you would like, you can go see him in his office or come to the mayor's office. Thank you.
Any questions or any further questions or comments for our mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate your kind words. Moving to committee reports from the city council. Councillor Strickland, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. Briefly, the wastewater committee met since our last council meeting. The committee received information that there's been a successful completion of the work done at RTJ. Still discussing the possibility of reactivating pump station number one to help move approximately a million gallons of wastewater from the Pine Creek Plant System to the Otoga Creek System to help balance the loads there. We were given information that the current ultraviolet light system, which kills bacteria, is not adequately working. Cost to replace this will probably be in the $200,000 range, and will take anywhere from six months to a year to accomplish. Unfortunately, we need a solution in the interim so that that bacteria is not discharged into the river. And item number 16 on our agenda this evening addresses that situation. It's a fairly low cost in relation to what the fine would be for one day if we are penalized. But all in all, it was a good committee meeting.
Councillor Wood, a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say, we had a public hearing on items one and two. There was no opposition to those items. So I do believe that we would be in agreement that we go ahead and move forward with those on this afternoon, sir. Thank you.
Councillor Brown?
No, sir. No report.
Councillor Miller?
No.
Councillor Bowes?
No, sir.
Councillor Fink was unable to be with us tonight. He was tied up in business in North Alabama and could not get back in time. We hope that he will travel safely as he comes home either this evening or tomorrow morning. And we will certainly miss his presence, but that's why he's not here with us tonight. We'll move into the agenda. First item is a resolution to grant a restaurant retail liquor license for Caesar Campos Reyes of El Patron Mexican Grill of Praval LLC doing business at El Patron Mexican Grill. Councillor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Where Caesar Campos Reyes of El Patron Mexican Grill of Praval LLC doing business, El Patron Mexican Grill has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license that business located at 2152 Carrefour Road, Praval, Alabama 36066, which is a restaurant. Where said license would be a new application. Now therefore be resolved, the city council of the City of Praval hereby approves the issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Caesar Campos Reyes of El Patron Mexican Grill of Praval LLC doing business as El Patron Mexican Grill. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councillor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Brown. Is there any discussion about this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. In the opposition, by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Because we have a rather extensive agenda, I'm gonna ask the councillors that I call on to introduce the resolutions to simply read the introduction line and not the entire agenda, and then move accordingly, unless there's an objection. Is there an objection to the council, from the council, rather? Okay. We don't have to have a vote, just a minute. Next item is a resolution to grant a retail beer on or off-premise license and a retail table wine on or off-premise license for Cindy Stevens of Cindy Enterprises LLC doing business as the Pasta Pizzeria and Grill. This also was the item on a previous, well, earlier public hearing. Councillor Strickland, will you introduce this resolution and move it, please?
Yes, sir. I'll read what you read.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Thank you. To grant a retail beer on or off-premise license and retail table wine on or off-premise license for Cindy Stevens of Cindy Enterprises LLC doing business as Pasta Pizzeria and Grill. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Strickland has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second? Second by Councillor Miller. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of granting this resolution or approving it, raise your right hand. In the opposition, by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is an ordinance. It's already been introduced and seconded. It does not have to be read again. It is an ordinance to amend the city code Division 2, Sales Tax Section 38-92, subparagraph C, imposition of certain sales and use tax. Is there any further discussion pertaining to this ordinance? Councillor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand there's some different thoughts about this ordinance, which basically would extend our sales tax, and there are going to be some amendments that will likely come before us. So I was gonna go ahead and offer a couple of thoughts. My probably main thought about this is that it should be deferred to the next council, because I think a decision of this magnitude is one that should not be undertaken lightly. And we do have three new councillors that are coming on board. Having said that, I understand the need on their part to sort of get, I think somebody described it well earlier, their sailor legs, and get to know the city finances in a lot greater detail, and to look at all the competing priorities and how dollars are used in the budget. And then you've got a couple of other aspects of this, one of which is the fact that retailers need adequate notice, I think, when they change their data systems and essentially their cash registers from one level of tax to another. So I also am reflecting back on a lot of the conversations that I'm hearing, a lot of points surfaced that we actually worked through. I can't tell you how many hours were devoted to discussion and thoughts and considerations about all the different dynamics about the city sales tax when we were entertaining it, it seems like, years ago, but not that far in the past. And these points came up, and different ones of us had different views on those different points. And collectively, we passed what we have currently in place. And I understand one of the biggest issues is we don't want to keep bringing this before us and go ahead and do it and let it sort of ride. But I think there's a sort of a competing thought in my mind that having it with a, having it with a timeframe built into it such that it expires at a certain point in time, in the absence of action by the council who is seated at that time, and certainly they could act on this, they could act on it their first meeting or their 100th meeting. That's at the discretion of the council. But I think that to pass it with an infinite deadline, a no end in sight sort of approach, while it does have some things to speak in its favor, such as it doesn't keep coming before the public, and we don't have to keep having headlines about it, and this, that, and the other, I think the competing thought in my mind is that perhaps it really should come before us periodically, because that makes folks reaffirm that it's the right thing to do. Because ultimately, I think one thing that we probably do agree on is that we need to get rid of it as soon as we can. I don't know when that's gonna be, because I understand the need to apply it to our debt, and that's not gonna be in the short-term future. But at the same time, I'm on the side of that point, if you will, in terms of favoring that it do, it does come back before the council periodically. And having said that, I think my inclination is to, adding all this up, is to support some sort of extension of the one penny, but not to have a no end in sight sort of approach, because I think that does a disservice not only to the citizenry, but also to the council that's coming to this dais in the next few weeks. So that's sort of how I'm gonna be approaching this. And I appreciate the opportunity to share those thoughts.
Any other comments on this proposed ordinance? Councillor Strickland?
Yes, sir. I have an amendment to present, if this is the appropriate time.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
At this time, I would like to amend lines 16 and 18 to read as follows, "May 1st, 2011, and ending on September 30th, 2031, or at such time as all existing long-term debt is paid in full." So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Strickland has moved this amendment to this proposed ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Bowes. Is there any discussion about the proposed amendment? Councillor Strickland?
Very briefly, and not trying to be redundant, following up on a few comments that we've received from the audience, would remind those that this is an existing tax that we are currently paying. It's not something new. Number two is, I'm certainly not qualified to challenge Mr. Mimic on any of the financial aspects, but I would remind you that to have a clear picture, and that would include a balance sheet as well as a budget, just looking at the budget does not tell you what we have in reserve or not have in reserve, and that we may be able to get by one year because we're riding on reserves that were built up from the prior year. So we, in order to have a clear picture, you need both a financial statement as well as the budget. Clearly, I'm a novice at this position, and I believe the public expects us, working as a team, to explore and find reasonable and viable solutions to the city issues. We have an opportunity tonight to do something our federal government cannot do, something our state government isn't doing, and that is paying our debt, building our reserves while living within our existing sales tax structure. I ask that you join me in supporting legislation that will provide clarity, instability for our retail sector, and a long-term commitment to our citizens proposing that our long-term debt will be paid in a timely manner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Miller, you had your hand up?
For Councillor Strickland, on the amendment for line 18, if you could clarify for me, all existing long-term bond debt is paid in full, that's, existing refers to what's on the books currently?
Current book debt, long-term bond debt that's on the books today.
Current debt. That's helpful, because that could be, I guess, interpreted in a different way, in terms of, I just want to make sure there's not a opportunity for a future council to add a different indebtedness through a new bond, which would be existing at whatever point in time in the future, you know, 10 years from now. A new bond is led five years from now, so... Did you get that last part?
I did. Do you desire to amend the amendment?
No, because I'm voting against it anyway.
Thank you.
Any further comment about this proposed amendment? All those in favor of adopting this amendment to the proposed ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? You have a majority, and the amendment is passed. Now, we'll have the amended ordinance in front of us. Is there any further discussion on the amended ordinance? All those in favor of adopting the amended ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Votes 42, and the ordinance is adopted. The next item is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance. Councillor Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. As declared, various weeded lots to be public nuisance and are ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67, the Code of Alabama 1975, as amended. I so move.
Councillor Bowes has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Wood. Is there any further discussion about this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for services. Councillor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign any contracts for services for community initiatives and city county services as specified in FY 2012, 2013 budget. So move, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Wood has moved this resolution for an adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Bowes. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Tyler Technologies. Councillor Brown, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for an online business license renewal system at a cost of $3,800. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Councillor Brown has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second? Second by Councillor Miller. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councillor Strickland?
Yes, sir. One brief question. On the scanned copy of the resolution that was mailed to us, there was an asterisk in one place that said there was going to be a dollar and a quarter charge for each renewal. Who's gonna get the dollar and a quarter?
Doug, you want to come up and explain that to us, please?
That dollar and quarter will be charged to the person who's renewing their license as a convenience fee to do it online. It's for credit card processing.
So it will come to the city and not the software vendor?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the purchase of a performance license. Councillor Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize the purchase of a performance license for 2011, 2012 from SECAC at the cost of $607. I so move.
Councillor Bowes has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Our legal counsel has asked that item number eight be moved to the end of our agenda and that we go into executive session, an executive session before we address item number eight. In order to move this resolution to the last item, I will need a motion from a member of the council.
Motion to move to last item, please.
Okay. Counselor Bowles has moved. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Striplin. Any discussion on the proposal to move it? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? Seeing none, item number eight will be moved to the end of the agenda. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of two service maintenance workers. Counselor Finks, none here. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize the hiring of two service maintenance worker, one employees for the urban management department at an annual cost not to exceed $63,064. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Item number ten is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one service maintenance worker, one. Counselor Striplin, since you're on the roll, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize the hiring of one service maintenance worker, one, for the sanitation department at an annual cost not to exceed $31,532. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, that resolution is adopted. Item number eleven is a resolution to authorize the hiring of part-time senior aide. Counselor Brown, will you please introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. To authorize the hiring of a part-time senior center aide for the leisure services department at an annual cost not to exceed $13,669. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Brown has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this is adopted. Item twelve is a resolution to authorize the hiring of a part-time finance data clerk. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize the hiring of a part-time finance data clerk for the finance department at an annual cost not to exceed $17,573. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Miller?
Just curious about part-time, fifty percent, seventy-five, or fifty? Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of adoption of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Excuse me. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one firefighter. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution?
To authorize the hiring of one firefighter for the fire department at an annual cost not to exceed $52,490. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Striplin. Is there any discussion about this proposed resolution? Is that some discussion, or is that just an editorial comment there? Okay. All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, resolution is adopted. Next item is to authorize the appointment of an executive assistant and an administrative assistant. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. To authorize the appointment of an executive assistant and administrative assistant for the mayor's office at an annual cost not to exceed $127,418. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is to authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $14,950. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
To authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $14,950 for one generator and transfer switch for the City of Prattville Fire Department. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. Is there any further discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution to authorize the purchase of one constant chloro-dry calcium, whatever. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize the purchase of one constant chloro-dry calcium hyperchlorate feed system from Water Treatment and Controls at an amount not to exceed $11,500. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various wedded lots to be a public nuisance. Counselor Bowles, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To set a public hearing to declare various wedded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. I so move.
Counselor Bowles has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. The next item will have to be read in its entirety because it has an ordinance attached to it. Counselor Brown, will you introduce the resolution and then move and present the ordinance?
Yes, sir. Whereas James H. Sanford is the owner of the property described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, and whereas the property to be zoned is located inside the city limits at US Highway eighty-two at Constitution Avenue, and whereas the petitioner wishes to zone the property to B-12 general business, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on September twentieth, 2012, whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of said property be amended as described in Attachment A and Attachment B to B-2 general business. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for November sixth, 2012, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. Proposed ordinance pursuant to the requirements of Title XI, Fifty-two, Seventy-seven, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Keep going.
Move and introduce the resolution.
Okay.
And then just read the ordinance on the next page.
On the next page. Oh, it's on his same page. Okay. So move, Mr. President.
Second on the resolution.
All right. The resolution is moved and seconded. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting the resolution portion of this signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Now, please introduce the proposed ordinance.
Proposed ordinance pursuant to the requirements of Title XI, Fifty-two, Seventy-seven, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Notice is hereby given by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that at the regular meeting of said city council on the second day of October, 2012, at Prattville City Hall, 101 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, the following proposed ordinance was introduced.
David, does she need to read the remainder of this ordinance on the next page?
Yeah, I would. That's how we've always done it.
Okay. Proceed, please.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: That the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February ten, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May, 1987, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B to B-2 general business, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville shall, at its public hearing on the sixth day of November, 2012, at 6:00 PM, consider said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on September twentieth, 2012. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law.
By point of order, this ordinance will carry over until after the public hearing has occurred. This time, we need to go into executive session, and then we will reconvene to address item number eight, which was carried over to the end of the agenda. With the exception of the city clerk, the assistant city clerk, and the executive assistant of the mayor, all department heads are excused. Mayor?
I might make one comment. Thursday, October the eleventh, 6:00 PM, our representative Robey will be here to address the citizens of Prattville.
Okay. Thank you. Chair, we'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Miller. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. We'll go into executive session, then we'll reconvene here to address the last item. For those of you that are not sticking around, thanks for being here. Chair, entertain a motion to go out of executive session and go back into regular session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We are in, back in regular session. The remaining resolution is Resolution Eight. Counselor Wood, will you introduce the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. To notify knowledge of Montgomery Incorporated of Franchised Agreement Non-Compliance, Mr. Chair, offer changes on line sixty-one where the word D to N, sixty-two, I mean, and of the wording to up to, insert it there. On the second page, on item number two, desk review, and the word D changed to A, and insert up to in front of seventy-three thousand, Mr. Chair.
All right. Counselor Wood has moved this resolution with the changes for adoption, and since it has not been read into the record, it does not require amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowles. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. That exhausts our agenda. Mayor, do you have anything else to share with us before we close this meeting?
No.
Anything from the council? Counselor Miller?
Just for my fellow councilmen who were here, four years ago, it's the, almost to the exact day, the day I, we got sworn in, and I think you remember the day before that's when I had my GI bleed and was in the intensive care unit at Prattville Baptist and didn't know if I was gonna be here the next day for swearing in. And you'll remember, we also had to retake our council pictures because I was so pale.
We had to prop you up that night.
I didn't want that momentous anniversary to pass without bringing that up. And for those who are even wondering and don't already know, I have, has yet to be diagnosed and haven't had a recurrence, but it's pretty scary.
Any other comments from the councilors? Well, I want to thank you for a good night's work and tell you what a privilege it is to work with you. We don't always take the same path, but I think we all have the same ultimate goal, and that's to look after the tax-paying citizens of Prattville, Alabama. Chair, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We adjourn.